We'll make a start. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our first ordinary council meeting of 2020. I would just follow the agenda here. Acknowledgement. We, the Greater Shepparton City Council, begin today's meeting by acknowledging the traditional owners of the land, which now comprises Greater Shepparton. We pay respect to their reliable elders, we celebrate their continuing culture, and we acknowledge the memory of their ancestors. Item number two is a privacy notice. This public meeting is being streamed live via our Facebook page and made available for public access on our website, along with the official minutes of the meeting. All care is taken to maintain your privacy. However, as a visitor in the public gallery, it is assumed that your consent is given in the event that your image is broadcast to the public. It is also assumed that your consent is given to the use and disclosure of any information that you share at the meeting, including personal or sensitive information, to any person who accesses those recordings or minutes. Item number three, apologies. Councillors, do we have any apologies today?
Councillor O'Sullivan, an apology tonight.
Thank you. Would you like to move a motion? Thank you. Do I have a second? Councillor. Thank you. So the motion is to note councillor O'Sullivan's apology and grant leave of absence. Okay? All in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Declaration of conflict of interest. Do we have any declaration of conflict of interest today with respect to the agenda item? No? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item number five, confirmation of minutes of previous meetings. There's a recommendation on page one. Would a councillor like to move a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll move the recommendation as printed on page one of the agenda with the comment that our last meeting was so long ago that some councillor's memories might be strained to recollect the accuracy of the minutes.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion, Madam Mayor, certainly.
Thank you. All in favour? Thank you. Motion carried, unopposed. Item number six is public question time. Mr Harriet, do we have public... do we have questions today?
We do, Madam Mayor. We have six questions.
Yeah?
I'll start with question one from Robin Biscetti and executive members of Save Our School. Do we have Robin in the... Hello, Robin. Welcome. Robin's first question is, would Greater Shepparton City Council please provide its assessment according to council policies and strategies, including logistical issues of the economic, social, and environmental impacts of... on Greater Shepparton, of the Shepparton Education Plan and the merger of four local secondary schools into one school on one site? Our response is, the Shepparton Education Plan is a Victorian Government initiative that is developing a long-term plan to transform education in Shepparton. The council is supportive of the intent of the plan to improve educational outcomes for children and younger people in Greater Shepparton, and this support has included being involved in the governance body and other working groups of the plan since its commencement. Greater Shepparton City Council was consulted as part of the site selection process for the new secondary school, but has not undertaken any formal assessment of the plan. Council continues to collaborate with Victorian Government in relation to traffic management planning for a growing regional city and to identify the cumulative impacts of the predicted increase in traffic volumes on the surrounding road network from increased population growth and from recent significant state government investment in a wide range of projects. This will ensure that such impacts can be appropriately managed early in the life of the projects. Council continues to advocate for funding for any necessary intersection and road upgrades where required as part of the investment in infrastructure. Question two, again from Robin, and that reads, we note that the mayor, councillor Sima Abdullah, publicly declared on the 19th of November 2019 in her return on investment statement to the council meeting with regard to advocacy at state government level for the Greater Shepparton Secondary College. The Greater Shepparton has a high level of early school leavers not finishing year 12 compared to the Victorian average, less than half, and for our community to truly thrive, these statistics need to be addressed. Would the mayor please provide the evidence and source for this statement, either officially or anecdotally, and any agency where it was verified? Response, Infrastructure Victoria has developed a fact sheet on disadvantage for each of Victoria's nine regions. The fact sheet lists areas of relatively high levels of disadvantage based on socio-economic disadvantage data, or SEFA. The SEFA index of disadvantage measures the relative level of social economic disadvantage based on a range of census characteristics and is produced by the Australian Bureau of Statistics. The fact sheet on disadvantage for Greater Shepparton includes a column on early school leavers not finishing year 12, and it states Victorian average is 17%, Marupan is 38%, Shepparton North is 28%... 26%, and Shepparton South is 30%. And we refer you to the Infrastructure Victoria website in relation to those figures and fact sheet. Question three comes from Deborah Barnes. Deborah, welcome. Your first question is, the Victorian School Building Authority engaged external consultants to view sites in Shepparton. The consultants engaged with the Greater Shepparton City Council, the Strategic Advisory Group, and other local organisations about potential sites. Considering this, why has council maintained they had no say in the location of the Greater Shepparton Secondary College? Our response to that is, the council was consulted by the Victorian School Building Authority in relation to the site selection analysis. However, the decision on the site was ultimately a decision of the Victorian Government. Question four, again from Deborah. The CEO and manager of Economic Development had a meeting with the area executive, Goulburn, in late 2017, where council identified it was strongly supportive of plan and amenable to negotiations regarding land purchases or swaps. In talks with councillors in 2019, I was led to believe council had made no formal decision, as the Shepparton Education Plan is not an operational matter. On whose authority and what grounds was the support given? The response to this question is, as above, the council was consulted by the Department of Education and Victorian School Building Authority on a broad range of issues relating to the Shepparton Education Plan. Council officers have also been included in the governance body and other working groups of the plan since its commencement. Council resolved to endorse the Changing Face of Regional Victoria advocacy document, that one, at its November 2019 ordinary council meeting, and this document fully supports the Shepparton Education Plan. A sod-turning ceremony was held last week and works are underway on a $100 million-plus investment, which aims to improve the standard of education in Shepparton, but also provides significant economic activity for the region in the form of construction contracts and jobs for locals. Question five, Sharon Castino. Sharon, welcome. Hope I've pronounced your surname correct. Sorry? Very good. I'll leave it with your pronunciation, thank you. Your first question is, city council's first obligation is to represent their community's best interest. In the past, many original choices of sites for government projects have been changed due to pressure and objections from the councils involved. In light of these facts, along with the facts that council has admitted, the government's choice of site for the new super school is totally inappropriate. Would you please tell us how you applied pressure and how your objections to the chosen site were conveyed to the state government? Our response to that question is, the council was consulted during the site selection process and a number of matters were taken into consideration. However, the final site selection decision was a matter for the Victorian Government. The council did write to the minister to ensure that traffic management, car parking, and provision for on... for an off-street bus interchange were considered in the final design for the site. And Sharon, your second question and the final question for tonight, in advocacy documents endorsed by council in November last year, it was stated that council would ensure that adequate parking for staff and students would be provided on-site of the new super school, as well as onsite bus interchange. As the plans for the school do not provide for either, what is council doing to work towards changing that plan? Our response is, is council's understanding that the site does include provision for staff, car parking, and off-street bus interchange. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Harriet. We'll now move on to our next agenda item. So on page two, item number 7.1, contract 1979, construction of Yakka Basin. Councillors, we have a recommendation on page two. Would a councillor like to move a motion?
I'll move a motion on page two. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Would you like me to read it out?
Would you like to please read it out?
The council accept a tender submitted by Apex Earthworks Limited of Guttonah for contract number 1979, construction of the Yakka... yeah, sorry, Yakka Basin for the price of $1.282,545.36, inclusive GST. And number two, authorise the chief executive officer to sign and seal the contract document.
Thank you, councillor Patterson. Do I have a mover? Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Patterson. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, it's one of the larger contracts we've let. It's to do with the basin, it's been... there's money been contributed over the years from different developers, and so we're flooding in that area. It was a... how do you describe it? There's been some comment on the actual contract that wasn't necessarily the lowest price that we received, but when you take all the other aspects into it, the weighting, it won in front of another contractor. The concerned councillors had, we had a bit of discussion, we were concerned it wasn't the cheapest price, but what was missing from some of the other tenders could have brought that price up to above this. So the process we have is very thorough and it weighs up a lot of things in a project rather than just price. And, yes, so Apex won the... Apex Earthworks won the contract.
Thank you, councillor Patterson. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. Just to say, this is a critical piece of infrastructure that needs to be built. Obviously, it's a retention basin for the north of Shepparton, it's in an expanding area, and no doubt, as councillor Patterson said, we've gone through our normal tender process, and these... sorry, these Apex Earthworks were the successful tenderer.
Thank you, councillor Adam. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to speak against the motion, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Madam Mayor, I have an issue with the process in awarding this contract. I've no qualms with the local tenderer getting the job, in fact, that's great, the local economy, but I do have concern when another local tenderer submits a price $185,000 lower than Apex Earthworks and Amisheer. When I review the comparative weightings, weightings when awarding the tender that council provide to us, I note that the tenderer who came in second on the weightings had a price of $185,000 less than the recommended tender, but was only 1.52% less in the weighting scores. It would appear that the second tenderer met the environmental measures because they ticked the box to say they had an environmental plan, but failed to submit it with their tender. Now, should they have submitted it? Yes, they should, no doubt about that. Was it a possible administrative oversight? If the plan had been attached, I'm reliably informed, they would have scored first on the weightings. The environmental plan is a standard plan modified for the project, something the second tenderer has issued to prior council tenders previously. My point is, when does common sense come into play? Why didn't the panel contact the second tenderer and ask for the environmental plan? I don't believe this would be seen as collusion or not making the process transparent. If something is left off a tender, anyone's tender for that matter, and it's an oversight, it makes good sense to request the information so an informed decision can be made. If this had have happened, it could have resulted in $185,000 saving to ratepayers. Is this what we're here for? Not my intention to throw council staff under a bus, but we need to add common sense to our processes to ensure the best outcome for ratepayers.
Thank you, councillor Jovaniti. Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor O'Keeffe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, it's an interesting one. When we do put things out for tender, what is our duty of what we need to actually advise those people, you know, where do we stand with that? I think, you know, any opportunity where there's tendering out, council receives what comes back in. If that is incomplete, you know, how do we then have that process that then goes back and overchecks? We, you know, we don't, and I think it's really difficult, and I think it's something that perhaps does need to be looked at. However, in this instance, we can only really tender what we're dealt with in front of us at the time. You know, it's not our role to go checking every single tendering that comes through right down to what they have or haven't submitted. In my business life, I've submitted contracts and I haven't completed it completely and missed out, so I do get it. You have to, you have to have it correct. So I think it's a good learning, I think councillor Jovaniti has some good points, but I do not agree that we would be guaranteed to have, you know, perhaps cost ratepayers that amount of money when the actual tendering was not complete. So to throw out a figure of what, you know, we're costing the ratepayers, I think that's really difficult and unfair, particularly when we haven't got that information in front of us.
Thank you, councillor O'Keeffe. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion?
Yes, councillor Summer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've spoken at length in these sorts of contracts about price being weighted so high at 50%. So for that reason, I'm actually pleasantly surprised that something has come in and proved me wrong, that price is the overarching decider of all our decision-making. Environment is important. I understand that if you want to get a job done, you basically want to look at the price, and that's the be-all, end-all, but in an economy, we need to look at more than just the price. As I've said many times, it's environmental, financial, and social in a triple bottom-line economy. We are spending lots of money here, and we have... we are charged with the responsibility of spending money throughout the community. We need to make sure it's sustainable, and the bottom line isn't always the only line. So there's never a guarantee of savings, even if they quoted a price that was less, it could still run over, so that's not necessarily right. But as Kim O'Keefe said, this is a great lesson for the future, and hopefully, in the future, contracts like these will have just as much thought put into their local benefits, past experience and capability, project delivery, and environmental measures.
Thank you, councillor Summer. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Okay, we'll now go to the vote.
Madam Mayor, could I have a write a reply?
Sorry about that. Should have asked you.
I think all councils have some sympathy for councillor Jovaniti's point, but we have to be very careful when we start fiddling with tenders. If we're going to contact one tenderer and suggest the needs to do something, do we have to do that to the other tenderers that have done it right the first time? It becomes a very, very sharp-edged sword that we start playing with. We allow ourselves open for a lot of contradiction, rightly so, so we do have to be very much at arms' length with our tenders. There's arguments that I believe, contrary to what councillor Summer believes, if the weighting for the finance was a larger amount, it's only a hole in the ground, right? You shouldn't be rooting too much else into the rest of it. If they want to go and dig it with a shovel, good luck to them, as long as they can do it cheaper, they're not going to muck it up, it's a hole. So the price should have a bigger variance than... no, than just 50%, I believe. But I think we all have some sympathies, and, you know, the company that did miss out, you know, they've probably learned a lesson, they have to be more compliant, as councillor O'Keeffe said, when you put a tender in, you have to summarise the whole lot. You should only... should know that you should only get one go, so when you do it, you should make sure you do it right, and I would certainly like to see them tendering for more of our work. But, you know, if we start ringing tenderers saying that, you know, look, you've left this out, you've left that out, I appreciate common sense should come into it, but we play a very dangerous game once we start doing that. And to say that we're, you know, we're spending $185,000 on this tender that we might be saving by giving it to someone else isn't actually correct, because the part that they left out could have an impact on the price, and therefore, it could have cost more, so we don't know, and we never will know. But, yes, I do support the decision to ward the tender to Apex.
Thank you, councillor Patterson, for you... for speaking to your right of reply. So we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Those against? Motion carried. Next is item number 8.1, on page six, appointment of new members to the Greater Shepparton Positive Aging Advisory Committee. Would a councillor like to move a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd be more than happy to move this motion, as I'm the council rep on this particular committee. I'll move the recommendation on page six, states the council appoint the following members to the Greater Shepparton Positive Aging Advisory Committee, commencing the 19th of Feb 2020 and concluding on the 25th of June 2021. And those community members are Alberto DeSimon, Veronica Dowell, Thirley Pearce, and Ronald Poole, and that we accept the resignations of Rosita Young and Sarah Payne, and thank them for their contributions to the committee.
Thank you, councillor Jovaniti. Do you... do I have a second, councillor O'Keeffe?
I'd like to second that, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Jovaniti, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. This committee is very active in planning seniors' week amongst other functions that they undertake throughout the year. They're a very keen and committed group of, I'm just trying to think of the right word, mature age members of our community, and I think for the time and effort they put in, they do an excellent job.
Thank you. Councillor O'Keeffe, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you very much, and I have to agree with councillor Jovaniti. It's a very active committee, this one, and I know they do some great work. It's been going for the past nine years, and obviously, a very strong link to council, so we have a very good advice in this sense that we know exactly what perhaps the perception of what's needed amongst our more mature community. It's great to see the committee, you know, doing some great things. If you look across the agenda, there's some really great things that they've been doing, particularly this past 12 months. So I think we also need to, again, thank the ones that are resigning. We've got Rosita and then Sarah, obviously, they've done some great work and been very committed, so we thank them for that, and we look forward to seeing what they can achieve in 2020.
Thank you, councillor O'Keeffe. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Okay, so we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Next, we have item number 8.2, appointment of new members to the Greater Shepparton Disability Advisory Committee. So there's a recommendation on page 10. Would a councillor like to move a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll move this motion, and I think I probably should shut up for a while. I'd advise you.
Yes, councillor.
This is another subcommittee, or 696 Committee, that I'm the council representative on, and I'd like to move the recommendation on page 10, which states that council, having considered the nominees received, appoint the following service provider to the Disability Advisory Committee for a term of one year and six months, commencing 19th of Feb 2020 and expiring 20th of June 2021. And that service provider is RIAAC or Rights Information Advocacy Centre here in Shepparton. And we do accept the resignation from Emily Slaughter from Gateway Health, and thank them for their contributions to the committee.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councillor Patterson, thank you. Councillor Jovaniti, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. Look, another busy group. We meet every couple of months and cover a wide and varied range of topics to consider the needs of people with disabilities in Shepparton. We go from talking about disabled car parks and where they should be located, and difficulties that people with disabilities have with the current ones. We also talk about access into buildings within the Shepparton CBD and outside those... that area. It's a very diverse and influential group, really, because they... they do tend to get a lot of things done, but in particular, what the latest... sorry, yeah, the latest success that they've had is supporting council in their application to gain funding for the pod that's now used up at the swimming pool, which is great for people in wheelchairs, that they now have a more accessible avenue to getting into the pool that Captain... that councillor Patterson and I used to use on various occasions.
Thank you, councillor Jovaniti. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, it took a lot of work to get councillor Jovaniti in the pool, but once we got him in there, he really did see the benefit, and I think that's why he's put his hand up to this committee. They do a great job, and hopefully, they'll continue to do it.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Okay, so we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Thank you. Motion carried, unopposed. Next is item number 8.3, on page 14, advocacy for improvements to the Community Support Programme, Amnesty International. Councillors, there's a recommendation on page 14. Would anyone like to move a motion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'll move the recommendation as a motion as printed on page 14 of the agenda.
Thank you, councillor Hazelman. Do I have a second?
Second motion, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Adam. Councillor Hazelman, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you. Look, in 2016, when the government announced the community sponsorship programme, and essentially, it enables individuals, businesses, or community organisations to fund and sponsor the travel and resettlement of people seeking asylum, broadly speaking, people welcomed the initiative, but the devil is always in the detail, and as the programme's gone on, people have recognised that the model does have significant flaws. The programme requires the refugee to be capable of getting a job quickly and have functional English, so that narrows the field down considerably. And it also requires a very substantial financial contribution. A family of five, for example, would end up costing in the order of $80,000. So there's another barrier to dissipation, and there is only 1,000 sponsored places, and they're not additional to the normal humanitarian intake, they come off the top. So every year, Australia takes about 13,500 humanitarian entrants, so if there's 1,000 of these taken up, that means there's 1,000 less that come from the normal refugee stream. And when you add all that together, and you look at the costing and that, it's a legitimate criticism that the current programme does exploit the goodwill of the community and shifts the cost of resettlement away from the government. That's probably the biggest concern that groups in the community would have, that the settlement of migration is a government responsibility, and it shouldn't be transferred to the community or to individuals. So the initiative of council to support the proposals recommended by Amnesty International, it's not a one-off, there's some 32 councils already around Australia have passed supportive motions looking for a fairer, more accessible refugee community sponsorship programme. The programme itself has real merit, there's a real opportunities here for people to be supported and assisted in migrating to this country, but, yeah, as I said, the conditions are so harsh, it's so restrictive, it'll certainly only provide an opportunity for refugees to come from a very narrow cohort of eligible people.
Thank you, councillor Hazelman. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion? Okay, only the mover can reserve the right to... only the mover? Is that so, Beck?
Beck believed so.
All right, you can speak later. So we'll move on to the other part. So would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor O'Keeffe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it's appropriate to say, you know, the Greater Shepparton community and region is a great supporter of all different cultures and community people and community members. I think it's great that we, you know, often recognise and acknowledge has been a voice, and I think it's a given that we would obviously support this, and it's a very important step of being inclusive and also being aware, you know, what the consequences are when these people don't have support. So... So I'm very proud of that and also great to see 32 other councils follow and I'm sure there will be more jump on board.
Thank you, Councillor O'Keeffe. Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Summer, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not going to object to this motion. It is an example though of how we can advocate outside our role for things that happen on a broader government scale. So when we say marriage equality, for example, is not a local government issue, we still have recourse to advocate for those things. Interesting that we're using this platform to draw attention to cost shifting of the government onto the private goodwill sector. And I do hope we're this vocal in the many, many, many other harsh and restrictive government decisions that are happening, such as privatising healthcare and not raising New Start. I know we're involved in homelessness. All those things need our attention. This has got a platform and it's a worthy cause, but it does make me wonder when we say that's not a local government thing, how stringent we are in keeping to our own process.
Thank you, Councillor Summer. Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Adam, would you like to use your right to speak now?
First of all, I'd like to reiterate all the words that came out of Councillor Hazelman's mouth. They were all to the point and correct. Look, this programme, as Councillor Summer has made some sort of comment in respect to us supporting this concept, well, this deals directly with a large, well, I wouldn't say a large, but a significant amount of our immigrant population to this town. Shepparton, Greater Shepparton is seen as a multicultural model Australia-wide, especially regionally as well. And yes, this programme isn't perfect, as Councillor Hazelman pointed out, but the recommendations this motion supports, hopefully will go a long way into making it better than it currently is. I think any programme that can assist resettling our refugees has to be fully supported. It may not be perfect, but I think it's going a long way to becoming a lot better than it currently is. And to say that we shouldn't get involved in this, well, it's not our programme, but we need to support it because it directly affects the people living in this community. Not that marriage equality doesn't, and this council did support that, just for the record.
Thank you, Councillor Adam. We'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried unopposed. Thank you. Next is item number eight point four. Seniors Festival 2019. Councillors, there's a recommendation on page 18. Would any councillor like to move a motion?
I'd like to move that. Thank you, Madam Mayor. The recommendation on page 18, that the council, number one, note the Seniors Festival 2019 final report, and number two, continue to support the annual seniors festival grant allocation of $5,000, including GST and a maximum of $500 per application, subject to approval through the annual budget process.
Thank you, Councillor O'Keeffe. Would a councillor like to second this motion? Councillor Sutton?
Thank you.
Councillor O'Keeffe, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. It's an important one that we support. There was a total of seven projects were delivered in 2019 throughout the municipality. The theme for last year was Get Into It. I think that's a great theme for our seniors, and they certainly did. There was a range of wonderful activities and I think, you know, giving some financial support encourages them to continue to have these type of events and festivals celebrations. So I think it's important that we keep the seniors busy, we get them socialising and participating and being active. And they also are great people, you know, to really lead the way in lots of things that they do. So it's a great one and I'm really supportive of this.
Thank you, Councillor O'Keeffe. Councillor Sutton, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Councillor Abdullah. Just quickly, the note that seven projects were delivered during Seniors Festival in October last year. And council will continue to fund this festival with $500 grants, but we do need involvement of the community groups and they're vital to be able to offer many events for this year.
Thank you, Councillor Sutton. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Adam, you go first.
Yeah, look, this is a fantastic programme and in fact, I think we should be giving more money to this type of festival as our community ages. There'll be more of us, and I put myself in that category in the next few years. So anything we can do to support this type of programme, I think should be applauded and I think it's supported.
Thank you, Councillor Adam. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Jovanetti?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can I get done in the race to speak on a motion by Councillor Adam? There's something wrong, believe me. In relation to Seniors Week, this is a fantastic programme that the Positive Aging Committee are involved with as well as council staff. And I think council staff need to be congratulated in the way that they actually deliver the programmes for Seniors Week. And it's not just for Shepparton either. Like, there's a great setup in East Bank where they have various stalls from various companies and groups, but they also run programmes out of Dukie, Mariposa, TAT, Talamba and hopefully next year, Merch. So it's a municipality-wide programme. And I agree with Councillor Adam that I think if there's any bickies left over in the barrel at the end of the year, we could probably slot a few dollars their way because I think the benefit that the seniors within the municipality receive from this programme, I think is excellent.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I just look forward to seeing these two guys arguing the case at the budget.
Thank you. Is that all?
Yeah, that's all. That'll do.
Thank you, Councillor Hazelman. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried unopposed. Thank you. Next is item eight point five. Community Leadership Programme. There's a recommendation on page 22. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Adam, thank you. What's your motion?
The recommendation is a motion, that the council note the achievements of the 2019 Community Leadership Programme.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councillor Patterson, thank you. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, this programme, I think it was piloted in 2014 and it's been delivered every year since then. Although this previous one wasn't delivered in the same way that the previous four or five years have been delivered, it was meant to be delivered by an external contractor, facilitator, sorry. But for various reasons, that didn't happen. But in a very, very short space of time, council put together a programme that was delivered over, I think, four or five different components. That being said, a great achievement on our council and the staff to put something together so quickly and not to let the people down who had registered for the previous one. I would like it to actually be delivered by someone external in the future. Just to actually have a different accreditation, certification, if it's been done by a recognised facilitator. As a council, we put a lot of money and a lot of effort into our young people and trying to develop future leaders. And this programme is at the forefront of that. So I think if anything, we should be actually making this better and stronger and more sustainable into the future. That being said, on such short notice, our team put together a great programme that was delivered and this motion just notes that.
Thank you, Councillor Adam. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. This programme's been delivered by private contractors for several years. There was a new one last year and unfortunately it fell over. I do support the concept of having an external organisation running it. But to our credit and to our staff's credit, they picked it up and gave it a kick in the backside and got it going and did a very good job of conducting a leadership programme. People think when they talk about leaders, they talk about people that are going to go on and be mayors and mayresses and local members, et cetera. It's not that at all. It's even someone that you can give the confidence to to become a girl guide leader. Not that, you know, I'm not in any way knocking girl guide leaders, but it just, it's a terrific job. My wife was one. I've got mine, I've got myself in trouble now. Just to get people to, you know, realise they have the potential to take that next step, give them some confidence and just show them the ground basis and what can be done. And they can, give them the confidence to join their local fire brigade or become the fire brigade captain or just small things that make a big step. And some of these people that I've seen come into these programmes over the year have no confidence whatsoever. And when you see them step out the other end, and it's one event I always go to, I really do enjoy them coming out the other end, they're a different person. And they have something to add to the community, whereas before, sometimes they didn't have much to add to our community. So it doesn't necessarily have to be the high flyers, it can be the ones that are, you know, very much the ground-based residents and makes a big difference. So I totally support it and credit to our staff this year that got one up and going at very short notice and encourage it to be continued and hopefully we can find some dollars and some that will provide it at a realistic price. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Patterson. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would a councillor like to speak for the motion?
Yes, councillor.
I hadn't finished, actually.
Oh, yes, you have.
Councillor O'Keeffe?
Thank you, Councillor Patterson. There's been 141 people complete this programme. And when I have been out and about a lot of the time, and particularly when you see them have their induction and they finish after the programme's finished, it's great to see the transition, particularly as Councillor Patterson's pointed out, and their confidence. But what I do say to a lot of people when I get the opportunity is to have a look at doing a leadership programme because you, number one, you'll get to have a whole different life experience and get to meet people you wouldn't normally get to meet and to be involved in parts of community that perhaps you didn't know about. So it's a great programme and really behind people, you know, looking at their personal development and stepping outside their comfort zone. I know someone said to me one day, and look, I wouldn't, perhaps I wouldn't have the confidence or I wouldn't have the ability to, you know, contribute. We all contribute in our own way. So I certainly encourage people out there to really think about taking on one of our programmes, particularly this programme. And it's going to be another one which I think in the future we'll see some great people coming through.
Thank you, Councillor O'Keeffe. Would a councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Summer?
I think it might be remiss if we didn't mention that our wonderful councillor Sima Mayor Abdullah was a graduate of this programme and a very successful one at that. So she's been a good advocate and a great role model in terms of what that programme can achieve.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Councillor Summer. Would a councillor like to speak to the motion? All right, I would just like to say that everything that you have said, that this is a great programme. And yes, when the programme started in 2014, it was a pilot programme. It was a very successful programme and of course, I was one of the participants of the programme. So every benefit that you have mentioned, especially Councillor O'Keeffe, that you have mentioned about, you know, knowing the, knowing different parts of your community, that is, that was one of the key learnings out of that programme for myself. So, yep, wholeheartedly support this programme. So, yeah, thank you. Thank you. All right, so we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried unopposed. Thank you. Moving on to item number nine point five on page 26, there's a recommendation... Oh, did I miss something? Oh, yeah, nine point one. Sorry, what's the problem? Yep, item nine point one. Records and information management policy and strategy. So there's a recommendation on page 26. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Patterson, thank you.
Yes, I'll move the motion on page 26. Recommendation, that council adopt or amend the records and information management policy and information management strategy.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councillor Sutton?
Thank you.
Yes, Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
I've actually made some notes on this and it says excitement, excitement, excitement. It's probably not something that's very exciting for most people, but it is a part of, a part of council's role to keep records, keep them up to date. And you never know when you need to pull out a copy of something and it's very important to be up to date. It used to be done once every four years, every council term, but now the hierarchy in charge in Spring Street want it done more often. I think they're based in Spring Street anyway, not the state government. And this is a part of it that we'll adapt. But it is exciting stuff for some people.
Thank you, Councillor Patterson. Councillor Sutton, would you like to speak to the motion? All right, thank you. Would a councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Adam?
It's great to see the council reviewing strategic policies of this organisation.
Would you like to elaborate? All right, thank you. Would a councillor like to speak to the motion? Any other comments? All right, so we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried unopposed. Thank you. Next is item nine point two. 2019-2020 Quarter Two Forecast Review. There's a recommendation on page 30. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Patterson?
Ah, yes, I'll move the motion on page 30, thank you. The council adopt the revised forecast identified by the 2019-2020 Quarter Two Forecast Review.
Thank you, Councillor Patterson. Do I have a second? Councillor Adam, thank you. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Ah, yes, just quickly, Madam Mayor. You know, everything's going on quite well. The capital budget resulted only 1% at this stage. Loans and borrowings are tracking on 19%, which is where they were, 19.4% I think, so they haven't moved. It is very important that we do recalculate every year or every quarter. And I'd probably ask our finance director, Chris Tyzel, to just give us more of a detailed update.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Just to elaborate a little bit on what Councillor Patterson just mentioned, we're continuing to forecast an accounting surplus at this second quarter review of $23.96 million. That's up $673,000 from the first quarter review. It's mainly due to an increase in capital grants for projects such as Ballaclava, Verney-Dukie Intersection Works. Materials and expenditures forecast to increase by $1.35 million, mostly due to the write-off of capital works in progress and expenditure on non-council-owned assets. For example, road assets that are owned by Regional Roads Victoria that we have to do some work on to improve road amenity, I suppose, or usage. Ending working capital is forecast to remain at quite a healthy level, at 169%. It's a slight reduction from the Q1 forecast, but of no concern because we are well and truly in the safe zone in terms of working capital. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Tyzel. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion? Would a councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? So we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried unopposed. Thank you. Next is item nine point three. January 2020 Monthly Financial Report. There's a recommendation on page 33. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor O'Keeffe?
I'm happy to move that, Madam Mayor, that the council receive and note the January 2020 Monthly Financial Report.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Councillor Sutton? Thank you.
Councillor O'Keeffe, would you like to speak to the motion?
I'd like to call on Mr Tyzel again, please, to give us a bit of an update on our financial report. Mr Tyzel?
Thank you. I'll get two goes tonight.
Yep. Aren't you lucky?
In terms of the January Monthly Financial Report, operating performance, financial health and financial obligations are all tracking in line with acceptable variances at the moment. Year-to-date working capital is slightly ahead based on some favourable timings with receivables and trade and other payables. Other revenue is slightly favourable due to additional fuel rebates that we've received and some additional maintenance contributions from Regional Roads Victoria. Sundry debtors for the zero to 30 days and 30 to 60 day categories have quite large outstanding balances. This is due to state and federal government contributions for the new SAM project that we expect to receive shortly. They're invoiced, but the state government and the federal government didn't pay quite as quickly as we would have hoped them to, hoped for them to. Rates debtors are within expectations. Investments are sitting at $40 million with an average interest rate of 1.74%. In terms of capital works, year-to-date actual is $30 million or 40.7% of the adopted budget spent. This time last year, although the numbers are smaller, we were 30% spent. So we are performing slightly better in terms of progress on our capital programme. And we're slightly... And we're slightly behind where we'd like to be, like to be in terms of the forecast. So we are down on capital expenditure in terms of where we wanted to be in the forecast but that's largely due to plant machinery equipment purchases of about 1.4, almost 1.5 million that we haven't received yet and some timing on works on recreational leisure and community centres.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr Tyzel. Councillor Sutton, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thank you.
With any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Yes councillor Patterson?
I'd like to make a comment on the capital budget where we've, councillor Tyzel.
May I?
A lot more money in being finance director than a councillor, I can tell you that. Basically, the capital budget's standing a little bit where we'd like to be but, you know, some people get very uptight about making sure we spend all our capital budget. I would rather see it taken slower and more precise and done properly than rushing things off and ticking boxes that aren't ready to be ticked. So I don't have that concern. I know we're just a little bit behind but I'm sure we'll catch up but if we don't, it is not the end of the world. The work's going into the process, it's just we don't need to be ticking boxes for the sake of ticking boxes and not getting the best outcome we can possibly get for our road projects.
Thank you councillor Patterson. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Yes councillor Summer?
Just as a comment to that, I don't condone rushing things either but if we have a projection, it's there for a reason and we should be trying to track on time. Now, I know all of it's acceptable variance but we will be watching to make, to try and encourage some movement in that area.
Sure. Thank you councillor Summer. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Yeah, all right, so we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. Moving on to our next item, 9.4, privacy policy. There's a recommendation on page 35. Would a councillor like to move a motion please? Councillor Adam?
Page 35, if the council adopt the privacy policy 37 point poll 12.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councillor O'Keeffe, thank you.
I'm happy to second that, madam mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just briefly, thanks madam mayor. This is in response to the Victorian Information Commissioners' report on our internal privacy policy. There's a couple of basic changes, I think it's in the notes there, but the four major points that the recommendations refer to are that councils review their privacy policies. Unless they have done so in the last year, the privacy policy reviews are scheduled at least every two years and that explanations for the process of assessing and correcting personal information are reviewed and one that I think is important, that plain English drafting principles are considered when conducting reviews to make it clear and easy for people to understand.
Thank you. Councillor O'Keeffe, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thank you madam mayor, nothing to add there.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? We'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried. Thank you. Next is item 9.5, contracts awarded under delegation and contracts advertised but yet to be awarded. So there's a recommendation on page 37 and up until 30, sorry, up to 40. 37? Oh, all right.
Madam mayor, I'm happy to move the recommendation. It's on page 37, at the council note, contracts awarded under delegated authority by the CEO, contracts awarded under delegated authority by the director and requests for tenders advertised but not yet awarded.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councillor Patterson? Councillor Jovanetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thanks madam mayor. Look, as I generally say when I get the opportunity, I think it's great that we're actually advising the community of what contracts have been awarded and others that are still in play. I think it's great, there's a couple of good ones I think this month. The lump sum contract for construction of the Marripna War Memorial Stage One, I think is an excellent project. It's something that has been discussed with council for some time and I think the people in Marripna who have been behind this project and the RSL, I think have done a fantastic job and it'll be great to see it up and running in Marripna. Another one that I think goes to show the leadership that Greta Shepperton has within the community is the lump sum contract for the design and construction of solar panels at Shepperton Soil Yards in Aquamo. I think it's a logical extension for council to move from upgrading our facilities here in Welshford Street with the panels to now take on other council buildings and I think that we're leading by example in relation to reducing energy consumption for climate change and I think that council is doing an excellent job in relation to that. There's a lot of other good contracts in there but I think that's enough.
Thank you. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Ah yes, there's lots of good projects there as we can see but this is a perfect example of how delegation works. As councillor Jovanetti spoke about, the Marripna War Memorial Stage One, here we are passing it tonight and it's already been approved by the CEO and it's half-built. So I'm looking forward to it being completed for ANZAC Day and I'm looking forward to some of the councils getting over that way across the road that goes across the bridge, across down through the forest, to get over and have a look at it. It'll be really special.
Thank you councillor Patterson. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Adam?
Just briefly, madam mayor, just to reiterate the words of councillor Jovanetti, the project for the soil yards is something that we've been advocating for, I've been with the committee for a couple of years now, about three years actually, and it's great to see it come to fruition and hopefully it'll gain more traction, the soil installations throughout our assets and our buildings. It's a great, great move.
Thank you councillor Adam. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Mr Councillor O'Keeffe?
Just very quickly, madam mayor, we can't go past tonight talking about the Merrigham Swimming Pool. Eventually they'll be getting their fence around their pool. It's a great success for one of our local, little local communities and I know there's been lots of Shepperton people heading over to Merrigham and I was over there recently with you and it's just great to look at that small community, to see what great things are happening over there and obviously the safety, having the fence around the pool is paramount. So yeah, I'm excited to see that one completely finished but if you head over there, there's lots of excitement with the Splash Park but yeah, some really other great projects there as well but that one I'll be really pleased to see finished up.
Thank you councillor O'Keeffe. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Summer?
So sometimes looking through this, some of the contracts come to a shock to us as well because obviously these are all operational. So as an example, there's contract number 2020, Appointment of SAM Brand Campaign Creative Production and Media Placement Agency. Obviously we will need to do some media around this but again, this was new to me. So hopefully we'll be really considering how we're tendering for that and carefully select someone who's going to attract the right clientele because we need to avoid generic imagery, we need to be unique, it needs to have class, it needs to have taste and really go across the board as a monumental tourist attraction, not just another regional art gallery. And that's going to take a special kind of person and I hope that we buy this tender, attract that person because it could be the make or break.
Thank you councillor Summer. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. So the next item is item 10.1, adoption of the Shepperton Health and tertiary education precincts, action plan 2020. So we have a recommendation on page 42. Would a councillor like to move a motion?
I'll move a motion, madam mayor.
Councillor Summer?
Slightly different. I'll move that the council, one, receive and note the Shepperton Health Education and Innovative Precincts Division July 2019 and two, release the document for consultation for a period of two weeks.
You are suggesting an amendment?
Nope, that's a motion. Amendment would be if it had been moved and I was changing the motion.
It's an, okay, alternative motion, all right. Councillor Summer, please say that again, just so we're clear.
Yep. Dot point as it stands, as written on page 42, second dot point, release the document for public consultation for a period of two weeks.
Point of clarification, madam mayor, has this already been released to the public for consultation prior to this being put together?
I'll ask for Mr Calms to...
Mr Calms, can you assist in answering that question?
Yeah, so the consultation, a consultation occurred with lots of joint partners, of course, with a number of stakeholders, with five, two public workshops, it was set out on page 45. So... So is the motion clear to everyone? Okay. All right, do I have a second?
I'm happy to second that, madam mayor. I think there's nothing wrong with going out to consultation and getting a bit more clarity if that's what you think we need. So I'm happy to second it.
All right, councillor Summer, thank you councillor O'Keeffe. Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
First I'd like to thank councillor O'Keeffe because I wasn't prepared to move that and it was a bit of an impulse but it has been on my mind for a little while.
Could I just have a point of order please? Could you read it out again please?
Yes. Receive and, that the council, number one, receive and note the Shepperton Health Education and Innovation Precincts Division July 2019 and two, release the document for public consultation for a period of two weeks.
So the action plan doesn't, isn't part of that?
What about the point two, which is about action plan? It's not com...
So that would have to be a different motion.
Removing point number two and adding another point about releasing the document for consultation for two weeks.
Yes.
Could I get a point of order please from the CEO?
Sure.
Is there any urgency that this goes through? Because I'm thinking, I can see councillor Summer's point of view but two weeks by the time it gets out there, this consultation process is nearly closed.
Twenty-eight days.
If we're going to have a consultation, we may as well have a pub on.
Can I just be laid on the table and have further conversation about this one?
Yeah, so my original question is to the CEO, is there any need for this to be dealt with quickly or?
That's a good question.
Thank you.
Very good question councillor Patterson. Obviously this is a document that assists us with our lobbying effort and the sooner we can get these documents in front of the various politicians, the better. As Mr Calm said, there has been appropriate consultation with the people who are actually impacted by this document. It's more specific than a broad requirement for a consultation. So is it necessary? It'd be an additional form of consultation. I don't think I can say any more than that. I really need more time really to think about what the motion is. I just, it's the first time I've heard of it.
Thank you councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you councillor Mayor Abdullah. I did mention in briefings that perhaps it should go out to public consultation. The first point in the document is better together and considering that the people impacted by this document are not just the stakeholders who were consulted, it's arguably our whole community, all our youth, all our future professionals and everybody who lives around that area or has to get to that area. I would prefer that they understood what our direction was and gave us some kind of indication that this is the direction they'd like so that there's no rude surprises such as super schools or anything like that. It's just a document where we're trying to organise a precinct into a health, wellbeing, education centre so that we can better prepare for our future. Now, there were a few things in that document that I took issue with that are still in that document and haven't been changed. So if me, who's fully supportive of this plan, still had some niggling doubts then it's possible there are people in the community who could have a say, could have a very valid say and could contribute in ways that make this plan more meaningful to them as well as to us. There's no, there's no end date or it's open-ended as far as the motion goes, it doesn't say when to go out to public consultation so that date could be decided in the future.
Okay, thank you councillor Summer. Is that all that you have to say?
Oh, well, just to clarify the how will that date be decided in the future because it's not urgent. Yes, we like to get on with lobbying but we can't forget who we're lobbying for. It can come back at a future meeting with dates and considerations that actually involve the public in something that's integral to all of our futures.
Okay, thank you. Councillor O'Keeffe?
Point of clarification, madam mayor, just for councillor Summer. Are you suggesting that the action plan go out to consultation as well?
Um, I was quite happy with the action plan personally but in terms of being transparent and accountable, yes, yes, I would have thought so.
So does your motion say that?
No, no, admittedly no. Open to amendments.
Councillor O'Keeffe, would you like to speak to the motion?
And look, it's a tricky one and I think the thing about this is of course a lot of the stakeholders would have had a lot of input from participants, particularly with Go Tape and GB Health and, you know, the obviously staff and they would, I would consider have been quite an extensive input anyway. Getting out to the broader community, I suppose we do have to stop and think about what the benefit of that is going to be. Working outside the professionals, of course, we need to, you know, engage with community. So I think that's what Fern's argument is here, councillor Summer's argument is. So yeah, it's a tricky one. I think it's a very, very important document. We're certainly looking at the progress across that location and what does that mean? If we feel it's not complete, I think I still support Fern's suggestion if that's what we think, you know, is lacking. Yeah, I've read the consultation, it does say the stakeholders have had a lot of input in it, all of the organisations have had a lot of input into it. Is that enough, I suppose is the question. Yep.
Well, thank you councillor O'Keeffe. Would a councillor, would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Councillor Adam?
It's against this particular motion but not against the idea or what Fern's saying here. But let's be specific here, the first part of the motion says, receive and note the Shepperton Health Education and Innovation Precinct, the vision, the vision. This is a visionary document in a sense, this is a lot specific and I would suggest we'd have many opportunities between now and whatever action takes place for more public consultation and more input. And the second point, which, well, I can't comment on that because that's not part of councillor Summer's motion but I think it's unnecessary at this stage to hold up this particular motion and as the CEO pointed out, it takes a lot of advocacy and a lot of effort to get the funds to actually get these things to become real. So I think it's just an unnecessary obstacle in this.
Thank you councillor Adam. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Would any councillor like to speak against the motion?
Yes, madam mayor, I'm not, like councillor Adam, not against the motion completely but as councillor Adam stated, it's a vision. It's not something that's set in concrete at this particular point in time. So my assumption would be that there will be a consultative process that will follow and then the action plan developed from there, which I would think would be probably the way to go. CEO's just got some info he might want to tell us.
We'd like to add your comments, Mr Harriet.
If the councillors might wish to consider which way this is going to go. If it gets up, you have a motion in front of you. If it doesn't get up, we don't have any direction. So you might like, someone might like to foreshadow.
Did you guys say that earlier on?
Something, they may wish to foreshadow something, they don't want to put words in anyone's mouth.
No, of course not, I thought I did say that. That was my thoughts.
He's spoken to it now.
Biggie, bud.
He's spoken to it now, so many.
Yeah, that's right.
Madam mayor, if I could, could I foreshadow a motion please?
Councillor Patterson, what is your foreshadow motion?
The one that's printed on page 42.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll move on to the motion that councillor Fern Summer has put forward. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? You have done, you, anyone else? So we'll now go to the vote. Right of reply, sorry, keep forgetting that. Yes councillor Summer, would you like to use your right? Oh, right of reply, sorry, keep forgetting that. Yes councillor Summer, would you like to use your right?
Yes, thank you. I would like to thank all of you for giving me the opportunity to at least speak on that point because it was rather off the cuff and you haven't had a chance to absorb what I'm trying to say. And perhaps the words aren't exactly correct. But thank you for at least listening. And at such late notice, I can understand why you wouldn't support it. But I think the vibe of what I'm saying does give officers direction from the conversation we've just had that we want more consultation from the public, not just from stakeholders. I mean, admittedly, all the people listed in this document weren't, they were invited to speak. We don't know whether they actually took up the opportunity to speak. So if the public were asked their opinion, I think we'd be pleasantly surprised, happy to support it. It's a lovely vision, but there are bits and pieces in there that it's not just a vision. There are things listed in there that are quite solid. So, you know, I think personally that we need to do some consultation and we should learn from what the state government does and not go down the line of what the state government does and actually talk to the people who are closest to this plan, which is the community.
Thank you councillor Summer. We'll now go to the vote.
So madam mayor, I don't get a right of reply as a second, is that right?
No, you don't. We'll now go to the vote. So those in favour? Those against? Motion lost. So we'll now go to the foreshadowed motion, which is councillor Patterson, would you like to move a motion?
If I can actually read it out.
Read it out, yeah.
Receive and note the Shepparton Health Education Innovation Precinct, the Vision July 2019. And point two, about the Shepparton Health and Tertiary Education Precinct Action Plan, February 2020.
Thank you. Do I have a second? councillor Adam? Thank you. councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, I would. Thanks madam mayor. A couple of things. First thing is councillor Summer's failed motion has some credit. I would have liked to have had more time to think about it, but we have a habit of not having a lot more time to think about it sometimes when councillor Summer puts the motions up. So I think this is a safe way to go. I always...
Point of clarification, I did mention that in briefings. I just hadn't worded it properly.
I apologize if I didn't hear you. With something like this, I would believe, and call me cynical, if we did put it out for consultation, there'd be very little if any input until we tried to do something along there and that's when we would receive feedback. We're not proposing to build anything, we're not proposing to knock anything down. This is solely a paper with what we would like to do in the future. So therefore, I don't think it's necessary to have public consultation. So I'm confident, I'm happy to support that recommendation.
Thank you councillor Adam. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you madam mayor. Look, this is an important motion here. I think we've been talking for many years about developing special precincts within the CBD and this does address those particular aspirations. But as I said earlier on in the previous motion, this is only a vision at this stage. I guarantee there'll be many opportunities for the general public to get involved in real consultation. I mean, there's a difference between consultation and transparency. I think we're being transparent by the fact that this is a public document, it's a public motion. Anyone who's interested in actually seeing the details of this has access to it. I presume by our website, correct? Mr CEO, you're nodding?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, good. So as I said, by not moving ahead with this, we're just unnecessarily gumming up the words.
Thank you councillor Adam. Would anyone like to speak against the motion?
Yes councillor O'Keefe? Thank you madam mayor, just a couple of things. I mean, when you look at the agenda here, the economic impact, the recommendation to adopt the Shepparton Health and Tertiary Education Precinct Action Plan for public consultation will not result in any adverse economic impacts. So it is a little bit flagged there that that perhaps could have been a possibility.
Okay. Thank you councillor O'Keefe. Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Would any coun... you have done that? So would any councillor like to speak against the motion?
Just that, I love what's written, I love the vision, but I think it needs to go to public consultation. Most of our risk reports come back and say that there is no economic risk for accepting and noting things, but that's what happened with our Shepparton Education Plan as well. So there's always repercussions.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Okay, so we'll now go to the vote. Done it, again.
Councillor Summer's reference to the Shepparton Education Plan, there was no feedback when the plan was first released. It wasn't till the plans came up. The original consultation was done with the schools. There was no objection there at all. The four schools joined. So down the track, when there's something physically proposed, that's when people get active. There is no proposal at this stage to build anything or pull anything down, as I said. So I don't believe there will be any concern by anyone. And if something comes up that needs addressing, I'm sure you'll be all happy to look at it.
Thank you councillor Patterson for your reply. We'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Those against? Motion carried. Thank you. Next is item 10.2, Asia Fruit Logistica 2020. Update. So there's a recommendation on page forty-six. Would a councillor like to move a motion? councillor Adam? Yeah, what's your motion?
Would you like me to read them out?
No, it's fine.
No, that's fine?
Well, I won't read it out, it's on page forty-eight.
That's right.
Thank you. Do I have a second? councillor O'Keefe?
I'll second that, thank you madam mayor.
councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, just briefly again, I'll be very brief, Tom. This has to do with our fruit logistical visits that we've done for the last two or three years or four years now, I think. Part of our international engagement policy. I think it's been very successful. I know that the former mayor's been on two occasions and reported back really positively. And I did on one occasion myself as well. One thing that's overlooked in all this, as you know councillors, we have two of our staff members who also attend these trips. And I know it's opened up their eyes and our whole vision in respect to dealing with international trade. So it's if, apart from all the other positives of the whole programme, it is basically training up our own staff to be better armed in the future to deal with all sorts of different international logistics in respect to international trade. So there's a win-win-win here on so many different levels. I think it's a great programme. Dollar value for what we're reaping, I think, is far, justifies the actual expenditure, without a doubt. I know in the actual horticultural industry, especially the fruit industry, I speak to a lot of people on a daily basis. And this has become part of the actual normal narrative of these people now. They talk about the logistics, they talk about how council's involved and how they support council being involved. So I think overall, it's a great programme. I know it's hard to actually measure absolute direct and accurate outcomes, but on the whole, generally the feel is that it's achieving what we set out for it to achieve, so I'm fully supportive. And just to note, this year the stand will be in Singapore due to the, well, logistic, a whole logistic event will be in Singapore due to the political situation in Hong Kong. So hopefully, if it settles down there, it'll go back to Hong Kong. But I'm sure it'll be very good in Singapore. So good luck on your trip, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Adam. councillor O'Keefe, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you madam mayor. Yeah, a little bit disappointing that you're only going to have the one opportunity this year, which will be at the Asia Fruit Logistica, which is the highlight of the trip. But in saying that, there's so many other great opportunities when we headed over there. The last two trips I've been on, obviously, meeting up with Business Victoria, Austrade, Gintan, going into our Friendship City. Obviously, that was a great opportunity to showcase Greater Shepparton. But yeah, but the fruit expo is the highlight. Taking one of our local businesses or growers with us was definitely a necessity. I'm glad to see that happening again, as councillor Adam pointed out, taking two of our staff. They certainly had all the nuts and bolts ready for us. When we got there, everything was, you know, fantastic, well organised. And the stand was often talked about amongst the other storeholders. So well done to everyone involved. And I'm really grateful for the opportunity I had and I'm sure councillor Abdul will have a great experience and opportunity. I do hope that Gintan come, the mayor, and some representation comes to Shepparton because we certainly have done our course. We've been there twice and we certainly gave them that invitation. So that may perhaps extend another opportunity. But yeah, I certainly support it, excited to see what we can bring. And I do believe we have had some great outcomes from our previous trips. Thank you.
Thank you councillor O'Keefe. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Okay, so we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. So on page eleven, next item, reports from councillors, nil. Reports from special and advisory committees, nil. Notice of motion, nil. And document for signing and sealing, nil. So we have item fifteen point one next on the agenda and there's a recommendation on page fifty-six. Would a councillor like to move a motion please?
I'm happy to move that, madam mayor.
Thank you. And your motion is?
That the summary of the council's community interaction and briefing programme be received and record of assemblies of the councillors be noted.
Thank you councillor O'Keefe. Do I have a second? councillor Hazelman, thank you. councillor O'Keefe, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, just very briefly. We can see all the things that have been listed. It's already been a very busy start to the year and I'm sure councilors are going to have a very busy year ahead. Yes, I'm looking forward to getting out amongst community and seeing what support councillors can give within our role. So thank you.
Thank you councillor O'Keefe. councillor Hazelman, would you like to speak to the motion? Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? We'll now go to the vote. All, those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. So thanks to all of you. That ends our meeting today at 6:52pm. Thank you very much.